When's the last time somebody used it? Back when Salzrea University and PRMC had it?
I don't even know about the program, I'm ashamed to say, so it's 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 been awhile.
It was purchasing, purchasing.
It's been on use at the university for at least three years.
They were promoting purchasing homes in the in the city. And it didn't. I think part neighborhood housing was part of it.
Do we park it as a possible adjustment?
Yes.
It'd be interesting to just ask HR, do you know about this?
Yeah.
Just to see if anybody knows about it. Could be why nobody did.
Came out recently, I know I had an employee that inquired about it. We've heard of it, so at least one person this year.
Okay.
For seeing if they qualify.
Yes. On the contribution for retirement healthcare, is that a percentage or a percent?
The the employee healthcare, it's fifty percent of the premium. We contribute fifty percent of the retirees and the premium. That's that's when you hear me hear me speak of the OPAD and how that turned into twenty, you know, twenty seven million. It's returned it's turned into a very large unfunded liability.
We we had discussed the possibility of going away with it. Initially, Ms. Lloyd had indicated that she didn't think it would be an issue with regard to recruitment. But since then, she's changed her opinion based on, I guess, conversation with the police department, but that's a that's a huge liability.
Well, it is, and and I will tell you, from a competitive point of view, I mean, there's very few. Especially, I I know I know there's places that do it based on a set amount. Because then you know where your liability is going forward. When you do a percentage.
That's what's happening.
That is a wide, I mean, you know, you know, how do you know? I mean, it's it's a tremendous liability for the city.
When they initiated that, they had no idea that it was going to take us here. Meaning that the actuaries' cost was three million dollars. This year, we're only funding three hundred thousand, so that means we're not paying for a per year cost.
So you're an unfunded bound?
For this year, two point seven million.
Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you what, I mean, that is, that's the most concerning thing I've heard. I mean, we're we're looking at twenty five hundred and three thousand dollars. We have two point, we have a contingent liability sitting out there.
Yeah. An actuarial liability.
Right.
Where we're giving someone the benefit from not paying for it, and they tune in two point seven million. Because we can't.
I would favor investigating the flat rate for new hires going forward.
Well, I think, which when we when we when we had a conversation with Jeannie about it, she felt like that as far as it had more value in retention, where people might be more apt to stay than it did in attracting new hires. So, one of the things that we proposed was getting, just instead of reducing it, eliminating it. And it would take time for that to kick in as far as having a substantial effect, but, you know, we discussed that. And then the concern was with the police, that, you know, it's that's where we are more, you know, more competitive environment, and it's difficult to find officers, and that's one of their, you know, one of the items that might inhibit our ability to attract.
It'd be interesting to do a survey and see what, based on where everybody else is.
And I don't.
Because that is scary.
One of the things I've learned with the police department is that, I mean, they they do their homework. They compare every department that they're thinking about applying for, so, I mean, we do need to make sure that we remain competitive.
Oh, no, no, I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning is how do we protect ourselves from liability?
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. And 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 it's probably as salient with a police officer as any other employee, if not worse.
About two point seven million.
We probably face that potential liability with them.
And if you look at the history over the last ten years, it's only going to get worse.
So, other than competitiveness, there's no reason not to phase that out or or stop it for new hires?
The the only reason, again, you might want to bring Jeannie to the table, we we wanted to bring a recommendation to to cancel in the near future. And what we wanted to do was, you know, get the actuary to restate, because we did not want to bring you a number that we found not to be true. Because the fifty eight, the 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 three the three million number that I gave you is based on a ninety percent assumption that the actuary was making. We found that number to be fifty eight percent. So, we have a, we have it to ask the actuary to restate it, bring you a recommendation and go from there.
I think it would be.
And that's going to need to have an outside of the budget process?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a wonder.
It's worthy, just have a closed session topic, we could bring Jeannie in, we could bring you some options.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that needs some discussion. Is there any idea of how effective it is that the community?
Hello, 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 hold on.
I don't know, John. We haven't studied it enough. I mean, two months ago, we were ready to bring a proposal of council just to to stop the benefit April fifteenth. And then we took a step back and said, hey, we need to take a closer look at this and make sure we're.
Because of the police department. We were concerned of it, of how important that was.
It should be a high priority.
I don't know that.
Every day we do, if we don't do something, our liability is going to.
Well, you haven't, you haven't gotten the new number back from the actuary.
No, I I should be able to.
Whatever that number is, it's going to go to zero.
Oh, no, I understand.
It's going to grow.
I should have that number next week, so I expect that I'll have that new number. But one of the things that that I should know the answer and I don't, is whether that we could continue that as a benefit. Could the benefit be different for police and this for the rest of the?
That was a question on my mind.
I don't know, that's another thing that it could be, would we consider that? So that would be one part of the options that we should consider.
Well, I think I'd consider it. I mean, we'd have to see the numbers.
Yeah, it could be eliminated.
I don't know, I I think it's very possible that's not a choice.
He's probably he's probably going to come back with about a one point six million, one point seven million, is my guess, number. Based on the figure you gave.
It's going to change.
It's going to change, but one point, one point six is still a huge number.
Still a big number. And over time, it accumulates.
Especially, it's a more expensive dollar when it comes unfunded.
If we if we fund it, then the costs come down, because the discount, especially depending on the discount rate that you use to, you know, to look at. Present value changes. We, there's a couple of things that we can tweak it with. So, then in the end, we have the the transfers to, that we saw when we looked at the marina and the parking and the community development, those are numbers you saw when we evaluated the other budgets.
Sixty one thousand for the grant specialist, that's loaded.
That's loaded.
And where would that sit? In the Stam's department.
It's there until a final decision is made about the position.
Yeah, we, right now, we think it's going to end up there. That that position is morphing a little bit into, as we talked about before, a community development manager and then a community fund manager and then a grant specialist and.
Wait, I thought those were two, I thought the grant specialist and community development corporation officer were two different.
Same person.
The what?
That is not what I understood the presentation.
That's what the numbers show here.
But those were two different jobs.
I thought one was managing all the grants and monitoring them.
Yeah, now.
Now the CDC was somebody else.
That is a direct conflict to what was presented. CDC officer and the grant specialist were two positions.
Mr. Cordy, if you want to help me here, but I mean, I I think.
I don't know what 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 support material, I haven't needed any support material to ever add more than one position.
One position.
But it's, that wasn't.
That's not how it was presented either at the mayor's press conference or at the state.
Well, there was never any intent to mislead council, I can tell you that it it was it was it was influx in terms of the responsibilities. We wanted to make sure we were were getting it right.
What was the CDC, what would be the job description for this CDC person?
We've rewritten a job description that includes both functions. This person would potentially manage a community development fund if the council chooses to take on that,
because the grant has to be written for that.
Take on that debt. Well, that was the five hundred thousand dollars in bonded indebtedness that the mayor proposed to take on for community development.
Which is not in the budget.
I thought, I thought.
Correct.
Keith, it is there, right?
According to, under neighborhood integrity and the narrative, the mayor's narrative.
Right, I just heard that, but it's not.
It's a narrative.
It's in the narrative, but it's not.
In the budget, budget.
Mayor's in the budget. The the the.
Bonded indebtedness.
I wouldn't want to get it.
I'm sorry, what you answered the question?
Now, do you show that in Schedule B?
Yes.
You do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that where it is in the document?
Uh, no, the the all that we've done so far at the mayor's request, we've shown the five hundred thousand dollars coming in and five hundred thousand dollars went out for the land acquisition and other improvements. And at this time, the the any debt service would also have to come out of that five hundred thousand dollars for this first year until we make any changes. But it's just put out there at the very end so that council could consider that initiative that he had he had chosen to bring to the table.
I just, I don't understand the CDC. I thought that, I guess, this report, when Debbie was writing grants back in the day, was that we would apply for, be competitive with other communities, applying for grants for community development to purchase stuff, not get it in debt. From what I was understanding, how it worked, and it could be different now, this is like, what, eight years ago, ten, say ten years ago, that it would give us, CDC would give us, and I can't be competitive, not applying for bonds and all that stuff to put us in debt. I thought we'd be applying more for grants instead of bond stuff that would put us in debt.
Well, I mean, regardless of the source of money, a community development corporation isn't like an automatic creator of wealth. It is a mechanism, it's an expense line, it's a mechanism, it's going to cost, it doesn't create money. It's an expense line, it's a mechanism to take responsibility away from, you know, the traditional government entity and to put it in a quasi-governmental, outside of the city.
Well, see, they didn't get, they didn't get full explanation because they killed it.
And a lot of people we talk about CDC do not understand.
Yeah, well, see, I didn't understand.
They don't, they don't know what they're talking about.
And they do other things in college.
But see, but see, what they did, what they did originally, probably didn't get on the tape because the political people killed it. The people who were opposed to it originally, and so it never got explained to me, like you just explained it.
Right, so so there are multiple, you know, as I think we talked about at one point, there are multiple evolutions of what this is. It could be everything from an urban redevelopment authority, which is an entirely governmental agency, to a catalytic development corporation that is entirely private. You can find something somewhere in the middle, you know, and there's a lot of gray area in there that are the activities of ACDC. We want to continue to talk about all of that as ACDC, we're just, you know, confusing the conversation, so let's not do that anymore. And, you know, if we're going to make an investment, you know, there should be some sort of plan, certainly five hundred thousand dollars for acquisition.
Well, it's only fifty for acquisition.
Well.
Hundred fifty, hundred for demo and two fifty for rehab.
Well, and that that is not a community development corporation, corporation, as it says, right. A community development corporation would be, we would be providing funding to an independent entity.
There is no community development corporation.
It doesn't exist. So, this is entirely connected, entirely.
Well, what this thing has morphed into, and I have failed to adequately communicate, the progression of this discussion to the council is that it started out as a grants manager that would be in community development and would basically be responsible for oversight of grants throughout the city, making sure that dispersments and what have you were managed and taken care of. From the.
I think you had a lot of north-south with that idea. You know, there was a lot of, okay, we got that.
From there, there was the idea that we would create a community development corporation, which is typically a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). So then the discussion was had, well, let's provide funding for, let's fund a community development fund at this five hundred thousand dollars with the monies to be used as they're shown there. And this person that was going to be in community development would, and that's how the job description looks right now, would do grant management and work as the manager of that fund. It's one position, and I I apologize, I have failed to make sure you understood.
You don't need to apologize, I can see what's happening. There is, there is a desire to do a lot of great things. There is no plan to actually get them done. And city council is being asked to ask to fund, to approve a budget, that there is no plan to spend the money. There there isn't, and that's, you know, that's not the way we have funded anything else, everything else in here, there's a solid plan. You know, and and I am all for action and, you know, progressive action that makes good things happen in the city. And it very well may be that right there, that might be, but we don't know. And and the fact that we have now taken a grant specialist position and confused that, or morphed that into, we have taken an apple and morphed it into a porcupine. I mean, we're not talking apples and oranges, we're talking entirely different. So, the porcupine may be necessary, the apple may be necessary. I think you've convinced us that the apple's necessary. A grant specialist who's the city's point person for coordinating our grants, that's a valuable thing. And it used to be what the assistant city administrator position was before. A lot, a lot of other things were put on that position, blatant, and that became, you know, more of an executive function. So, we had, we had that job, I think we need that job again.
And nothing else on it, just that.
Right, and and just that, and it not morphing in any way, shape or form. Let's set that aside for a minute, because I thought we were funding that, I thought that was asked and answered. Let's set that aside for a minute, now we got the community development question. What we really have is an unfunded community development position that there is a claim that we need. I thought, I buy that, okay, you know, I I believe that. So that's a separate position as I see it, and then five hundred thousand dollars for them to do the work. I buy that too, just not sure there's any effort into a plan. You know, and that that's not the way we handle anything else in here. It's the only thing we can handle about that.
In the mayor's narrative, it does say, community development corporation officer.
Yep.
That amount is exactly the same as what we see in the detail on page, whatever number that is. Sixty one thousand nine seventy eight, it's page sixty two, under nine, ninety one oh oh one. It's five ninety nine one one four. Transfer for community development, that's the community development department, not the community development corporation. And this grant specialist has been parked under the community development corporation, I mean, a department, and somehow that got, I think, confused with community development officer or department corporation.
Yes, the narrative and the details don't align at all.
Right, but they both have that same amount, sixty one nine seventy eight, so I think that's what happened, is that that got confused because of the name.
So, one, we need to come to a conclusion, whether or not we are supporting the retention of this grant specialist position. Are we keeping that? Separate and independent.
Personally?
Yeah.
Yes, for me.
Yeah, yes, yes, that's it. So, grant specialist, a city grant specialist position, that does nothing else. And then maybe we want to see our job description on that.
And metrics are easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is, it's gone beyond nice to have, to need to have.
Nice to have, to need to have, yeah.
And not just coordinating, but seeking grants, finding new grants.
That's a must, oh, yes, and I think there should be another objective.
Yeah, metric.
Metric.
So, that that's been requested, that is definitely in, we love it. Now, there is no other position shown, there is no community development corporation position shown.
I was looking up community development corporations, and what they're saying is done the way in the world that woman could do it.
You can't do both.
Or man, whoever's the person, from what I'm seeing, what the community development corporation is doing around it.
Well, what do you, what do you need, no way, what person?
If you had, grant specialists could not do what they're saying.
That's not even an option, we just funded the grant, we just all agreed.
Yeah, we don't want someone to do the CDC.
Grant social position, that is, they can't.
That's it, they can't do it.
That's not in the job description, no way.
And I'm just reading some of the things, just just glancing through the stuff.
So now we're having a separate conversation about the community development.
Well, see, well, I I'd have to, we'd have to see a plan and stuff.
And we have a community development department with a community development department director.
Person, that's right.
And now we're adding another person.
That's right, it's true.
So, there should be the capacity within that department to say, we need a separate, independent CDC, here's our plan for it.
That's right, that's absolutely. It shouldn't be something grabbed at the air and say you want it.
Well, you know, you talk about there's there's a, there are different, it's morphed into a bunch of different things, from ways it could be run. If you go to this five oh one(c)(3) route and then have a retired business guy that's going to take the helm and work with the coordinator, which is a combination of the private, the public, or the nonprofit and the and the public sector, that's one way of running it. Or you can put it under, but then it's not a.
Then it's straight government.
Straight government, and I'm not, I'm not sure if that's what you, what we need.
And 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 let's, let's also distinguish, what what is being proposed here is a, what is being proposed is a conversation about acquisition in neighborhoods. This is about housing, this is about community development and housing. If if we needed a catalytic entity that the government had a role in owning property, you know, it would, we we need to distinguish between the need in our central business district, which is separate and independent, and of housing. One entity should not do both, believe me, it does not work, you know, when one entity does both. So, those are separate things.
Does both what, I'm sorry, say that.
One entity should not be doing the the land banking and development of central business district and the land banking and development within how, for housing in neighborhoods.
They may communicate, but they should not be doing that.
I, you know, they should communicate like the retired part of the police department, sure. So, in other words, that, yes, but they have nothing to do with one. So, and I'm not sure we need both or either, what we do need as a community is a catalytic development corporation. Again, it can be private, I think we kind of have one now, you know, in that there is one developer who does a bunch of stuff downtown. And in lots of communities, it ends up being a private entity. In other cases, it ends up being a public entity, and in other cases, it ends up being somewhere in between. You know, this CDC, which, you know, and there are other flavors of of catalytic development corporations, but, and and then, I think we need to have a conversation about whether it's in town or, you know, downtown or, you know, the neighborhood. And I think we already addressed, we we feel that we are underfunding the efforts in our neighborhoods. We agree. So, we agree that our our conversation with SNHS was that, you know, we're not doing, we're not appropriately resourcing our priority in that case. But we've we've got a private vehicle right there that receives city funding.
That's where I was going, two two things, we've got, or a couple, actually, we've got SNHS that is doing some of that for us, but not exclusively for us. And we're funding them, but minimally, not to the extent to accomplish what we want to. And can it, just boosting their funding, get to where we want to go? Do they have the capacity to do that, or do we need to go outside of that and go a different direction? As far as the community development department, I have some questions there, I certainly don't think this belongs there, in my opinion. That, from what I know of it, and may correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Stam and Ms. Hussey and this new person, this grant specialist, their primary focus is grants, it's grants, searches, grant completion, monitoring. That really almost is the grants department, not the community development, I think it's kind of misnamed. And that that is their function, and while that does help with community development in that way, it's not the same thing as what we're talking about here. So, and I think that's creating some confusion, I don't know what we, what we do about that, but I don't think that's where this belongs, what you're talking about, Jake.
I think the intent was, if you if you were to add the resource within the community development office, then it would allow them to get outside of what they're typically doing and start looking into some of these other things like property acquisition, demolition.
Hold on, timeout.
What happened?
Technical issue.
My laptop's about to malfunction as well.
So, I accidentally unplugged something.
Bring this into the dictionary.
Is that how that happened?
Yeah.
So, well, but this department, if I think we're going to have a conversation about appropriate or not, but I'd question whether or not the grant specialist should be or not, whether or not CDC funding should be handled through the, I think CDC's funding should be handled through community development, it's community development.
I'm I'm talking about the function, the jobs that are being done in, the two positions that are there now are really focused more on grants than.
They're grant, they're focused, they use grants to do community development work.
Okay.
I think they're community, I think all their work is community development.
And and I think that supports the argument that what the mayor was trying to accomplish here was to add resources to the community development office to take on some of these other initiatives that they can't get to because they're handling what they can't.
I just want to try to wrap my head around this, it's kind of swirling, I'm sorry.
So I I don't know that it's necessarily fair to say that I didn't, I know I threw you a curveball here because I thought we were latching on to this early on when we were talking with the community development, we were going to revisit this discussion about the position, and and knowing that it was morphing along the way. I don't know that it's necessarily, it's fair to say that we don't have a plan, because we do in that we would provide the resource, they would be tasked with a certain set of objectives, and we would have provided the funding within this year's budget to execute those outcomes. So, I mean, that that's the thinking, and I know we, along, you know.
What proof do we have that we need a new standalone private, a new standalone private entity?
I would respond to your question by saying that we feel like we have the most, the best opportunity for controlling outcomes if we're steering the boat.
But but, you know, CDC means we're not steering the boat, that's what a CDC is, we're not steering.
You're not steering.
It means we 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 delegate that to a private entity, which would have a private board of directors, which we may have a seat on. That's what a CDC is.
Exactly, I realize that, and I think that's why we're saying, as as this, we continue to discuss this internally within the mayor's office, that's why this thing is becoming more a a community development fund under the oversight of the manager. And it's not really a CDC.
Yeah.
It's 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 providing funding so that this person can do some of the things that we're seeing on the screen.
So at this point in time, you know, we've we've approved the grant specialist position, we would have to add in the funding for the CDC position because it's not shown. So, we'd have to talk about that in our next conversation, which I think is going back to the, our list of follow. So, we'd have to talk about that in our next conversation, which I think is going back to the, our list of follow-ups and additions and tractions, because I think we've covered everything. I think we have hit every department and everything on our list so far, correct? So now we're just a follow-up?
Except getting the employee, employee affairs committees, but we'll do that next, next, next week.
Financial help?
Which is queued up and, queued, queued up and ready to go.
Now, we're, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna come back to that, because that's on the follow-up.
I'm steering toward what Laura said, but salt moving out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll talk with them.
Yeah, because it's not in the budget. It's not, because we were presented a grant specialist position. We approved that, it says grant specialist, that's fine, done. They can't also be the CDC, a director of a CDC to be outside of the city. That would not be a city-funded position anyway. But if, if we wanted to provide funding to that entity to pay for their director, that'd be fine. So the question really is, do we wanna add the funding, and we'll come back to this, do we wanna add the funding for a CDC officer and, and create that organization so all the startup costs for that entity? And then provide the half of that knowledge for acquisition already happened. So, that's it, that's a standalone question, we can come back to that during follow-up. But as of right now, let's go back to, let's go to financial health. I've got that up on the screen. We'll walk you through it here. It's gonna look very similar to last year. We'll look at some financial trends, some ratios, and then we'll get into the budget highlights. The financial overview touched on the net assets. Again, the most notable line was the unrestricted traveled to a negative two point four nine million. Mainly due to that unfunded liability. Yeah, I'm drilling it in, but.
Yes.
And then, this is where you can see, we've got some history for you, just so you can see some trends all the way from two thousand seven to two thousand fourteen, and you can see.
Can you pull that up for me?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I'll supply this to you in email and let you kinda study, so you can study that. Yeah. Yeah.
Can you go back to?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Okay, moving on to fund balances at the fund level. We saw this slide when we did the financial review. You can see we peaked in two thousand twelve. And then it's fallen back since then to our current balance in two thousand fourteen, to an unassigned balance of eight point seven million. That's that figure right there. Trying to follow along with the changes in the fund balance at the fund level. We can see history all the way going back since, to two thousand five. Again, I'm gonna share this with you so you can just take a good look at it and see if you pick up any trends. This is a graph that shows you by program, public safety, public works, what the, what, what the, what the trend line looks like. Public safety's right there in the middle, the brown. And then.
That's police and fire.
That's police and fire. Also represented is public works, it's the other big, the big department. So that's just helpful to get a, to get a high-level view of the cost and the changes in the cost over the last eleven years. Now we move to our benchmarks that we have every year. The, the first one is total fund balance. Total fund balance has, has gone down a little bit since la, the previous years that we looked at it. Again, we're always behind, we're looking at the last audit, this is as of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. It was eleven point eight million, the previous year it was eleven point nine. It was only the ninety thousand dollars that we really put under the hood when we saw the financial overview, you know, how, how, how we came to that ninety one thousand used surplus. It's compared to the revenue, it's still strong at thirty two point five percent. Anything over fifteen percent is considered to be strong.
But that includes restricted and unrestricted.
Yeah, this is total. We'll be looking at unrestricted here in a moment. Just to project that out based on what we know, if we, it's like the worst case possible, if we actually used all the surplus we've so far budgeted to use, we're still at twenty two point six percent, which is considered to be strong. The unassigned balance compared to total revenue, the ratio of twenty four percent. Projected is fifteen point nine, both of them are considered to be strong. Our debt to market, a total debt of seventy million, it's declined from seventy three in the previous year. So is the market value of our property declined, but we, here, we, we, we still retain a adequate, uh, we, for the debt per capita.
Can you go back to that?
Sure.
So, we're close?
Yeah.
I see it's gone up a little bit, but we're close to strong?
Yeah, yeah, if we had gone in the other direction, we, last year we were sitting right on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's safe to say that it's the debt service that's our restrictor, it's not the amount of debt that we have.
Okay.
This is kind of just another way to look at the debt per capita. It also indicates that.
Is our population number closer from two thousand ten?
Yeah, actually, I got, that, we use that on the UFR, I got that number from, from public works.
Yes.
But I'm not, I'm not sure why, why I'm not getting a different number from them.
Sen, US Census says. Thirty three.
Thirty three, something, yeah. But that would make the number better, thirty three.
Thirty census.
Annual debt service, two point four, it's gone up from two point one. Our budget also increased, so the six point six is, um, six point six percent. We said our, our policy has us in that ten percent as, as, as being our limit. Looking at water sewer, we have an unrestricted fund balance of seven point seven compared to our total revenue. It's fifty four percent. Still considered to be strong.
Per kilo.
And our parking authorities, unrestricted position of one thirty four divided by the revenue of sixteen point six. Main thing is there is not so much what it is, it's how fast it's declining. So that's the one that has a needs improvement. The overall scorecard this year is exactly the same as it was last year. You can see, that's a summary of all the benchmarks we just looked at. Switching gears, going to the budget, just to call your attention to the, some of the highlights, things that likely you already know. But the personnel, we have a one-time, a one-step increase for all employees except for the swarm police officers. We have some additions and reclassifications, I have a page for that, I'll, I'll let you take a look at that. The water sewer fund has proposed a two percent decrease in water sewer rates that amounts to two hundred seventy thousand five hundred. That combined with the rate decreases in the previous two years would result in an eleven percent decrease. I should say, I guess, over three years. The sewer, there's a sewer-only reduction of twenty, an average of twenty two percent. That doesn't mean everybody's rate's going down twenty two percent. That's, that's the average, because some are gonna go down more, some are gonna come down less, so it's not.
Not a huge amount more or less, though, it's probably around twenty two.
Average is twenty two percent, so in total, it's, to the city, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand. So, we consider that more of a correction than, than a reduction. It's, it's the way that it's been viewed. We're gonna see capital projects totaling eight point seven million. So, this is the summary of the additions and reclassifications that I'm aware of. I've just tried to keep a summary as I went through it because I know you guys don't wanna have to search for them. And then, some of them surfaced in the meetings, but just in an attempt to keep you aware of the changes that occurred. This is, this is that list. There was public works mentioned, there was the pre-treatment coordinator had a, had a reclass, had a step adjustment, actually. Wasn't a reclass. They, they kept the same grade, but they, they, they changed steps. The community development, administrative support associate was reclassed. The finance department had the council payable clerk two going from a six to seven. BPI had a reclass in the two in HR. There's a step increase for the police chief. There is an addition of a code, code enforcement officer, and there was a grant specialist added.
Can we go to the, so the grant specialist, I get from salary only to a perp amount. Code enforcement officer, thirty nine to ninety five, does that also include the vehicle?
It includes all, yeah, lots of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, that salary holds, that's, that's just all the other stuff that if that person's added, it takes to get, to get in there. So, hopefully I didn't miss anything, those are all the additions.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything back yet.
Twenty-five second rule?
So I, I, fortunately, I think we were making into all that stuff when we were looking at the budget. I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't miss something, because I know it's buried in the details.
Yeah, we usually get this update in the beginning, and I think that's more useful than at the end.
I mean, I will say this, so there, there are a couple trends, OPEV and others that are scary. Parking is another one, but I, I mean, once again, let's not lose sight of the fact that, things are pretty good financially, you know, especially if you look at the county's financial office presentation, which is very, very scary.
If I could, though, one of the things I think I would like to see, and I know, I heard you did work, but I think it's pretty simple. In the graphs, you have the positions. Trending is just as important. I know they're, they may be small and maybe difficult because you do a lot of stuff with graphs. But I think a, a trend line over, over the years will show, it, it would be nice to see a, a bounce, you know, a greater sign of bounce rather than a, I don't know, I couldn't tell.
For numbers in the place or?
In my head, I was trying to do it.
So.
No, if you look at, if you look at the position, the strong, you go, yeah, you go up here.
Oh, yeah.
And you do this, that's fine when you see that, but is it, what position, strong has a range.
Right, right. So seeing that graphic.
Seeing that graphically in terms of where we were, where we are.
Right.
Then visually just look at it, okay, we're okay, because we're, you know, we have these ups and downs, that's fine. Or if you have this, it's even better, but if you have this, then you gotta.
When we put in the new meters on Main Street and, and as we start to do that on other streets. Well, like, I broaden that question. We are doing a parking study, correct? They, they've requested that in the, in the budget. It was a discussion of a parking district study. The, the, the main thing, when you said, you said Main Street, of course, we did the hundred twenty thousand dollars, I think it is, for the years, for the. Yeah. Yeah, but. So that's, that's. But there was a discussion. There, there is a study of some sort. I, I forget the, the details of that study, but I'll, I'll get that. Of what, you know, of what the, of what the appropriate funding, or what the appropriate fee for, for parking, yeah. Yeah. I think the, the, the study that I remember had to do with maybe even the garage's condition. Yeah, well, that's a, that's a past study. I, I thought there was discussion of a future study. And I thought it's, at CDC that was discussed. Yeah, I'll check on that and get back in.
I'm not sure about that.
And Jennifer was gonna put out an RFP for services.
Before we get away from that, the last slide you were on, Mr. Cordy?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, Julia reminded me, and before it gets away from us, that we had also talked about, council talked about our potential reclassifications within the clerk's office. We're working on getting those PDQs completed and reviewed and getting the results to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's just not done yet.
Yeah, I figured that was just not, so I didn't read it until this one.
Right.
Right, the next slide has, it's in small print, you can read it when you get the actual copy. That's just a list of corrections that were made to the position counts and didn't want them misinterpreted as getting credit this year. So you'll see that public works made a few changes to that, their position summary to get them up to par.
I'm sure I know what that means.
That means that this year, it's like restating previous years because the counts were incorrectly represented in the budget last year.
Okay.
And, and there's some comments there that would, would explain what was changed. I just didn't want you to look at those and, and then look at last year and then say, why'd that change?
Right, right.
Right, so they, they prepared that summary. And then we had our top revenues, and we already saw our OBC taxes, EMS revenues, railroad, school zone, administrative fees, and highway user. And the top decreases was the rent donations, the one fraction from the recent taxes. What was the rent earnings decrease about? It was, it was the radio tower, we had a one-time three fifty last year, and it got, it's a forty thousand dollars a year after, after that. This is a slide that will show you the assessments, you'll have this to keep to study, but you can see that the total assessments were actually, for the first year and, and a few, rose from one point nine to a little over two million, or two billion. This is a slide that just gives the general fund expenditures by category. So you can see for personnel services, operating, capital outlet, debt service, and others, how this are trending and how this budget compares to the previous year's budget. And I have a summary that you could study that has the general funds expenditures by department. To the capital project appropriations, this slide, it's the first year I took the CIP, and I wanted to relate the CIP to what actually got funded. So if you looked at CIP, we had nine point one million total. First, we reduced that by four hundred thousand because that went to the swarm order fund, so it no longer pertaining to the general fund. So if we start with eight, eight million, seven hundred and three thousand, you can see that, we'll have a slide that lists the capital projects that got funded of four, four million, six hundred and thirty one thousand eight hundred. And it shows there was one project that was scheduled that was deferred this year, and that was the community circle. The two, two, two million, nine hundred and ninety six thousand, seven hundred was all funded, this gives you the accounts that they're funded in. So all that CIP got funded in those accounts, and this over here shows you where those were funded, either from revenues or from capital leases.
Community circle was deferred again? To two seven, twenty seven.
Yeah, we talked about that with public works, and I think based on their, they're still working on the easements, and, they, they don't have any problem with moving it back here.
Hey, moving on, moving on to the four point six million that was in CIP. Of that, this is giving you the dis, the funding sources, showing you where it came from.
I, well, I guess we should finish the presentation, I'm not concerned about that proportion of bond debt for CIP.
Moving on to the next slide is the CIP of five million, two hundred and thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and forty. Of that, four million, one hundred and ninety six thousand, two thirty was funded. Seven hundred and forty two thousand, seven ten was unfunded based on public works' priorities. And the, the, in the budget, there's three hundred thousand dollars that was for some capital, capital ally that were funded from, from lease. And then, looking at the total of the four million, one hundred and ninety six thousand, we can see how that we propose to fund those items. Mostly, it's being funded from funds on hand, which includes the impact and the revolving funds to tune of two point nine million, one million in bond issuance, two hundred fifty eight thousand, three hundred and thirty out of Pega. And so the top three, I knew that um Mr. Heath would be asking if I didn't provide this. Because I've I've learned already, so I'm trying to get out in front, except he would probably say top five, but I was all I could come up with. So I just was gonna summarize and wrap up by saying, you know, top three weaknesses. And we had our, we've seen most all of these topics before, but it's nothing like, you know, we'd be that that we need, we're concerned about our debt capacity going forward. We did discover that the current plan of using four point five million is actually using uh about sixty percent of the total estimated twenty-four and a half. So we're just getting out in front uh of our capacity sum. Uh the water sewer operating account balances, I I showed a slide when we did the financial review indicating that the while we had eight point one million per the audit of cash in the uh water sewer fund, uh the operating share not designated for capital purchases was a small portion of the total and below what would be generally accepted as a minimum. Uh the budget sustainability, the budget is tight and it's it's challenging to fund uh new revenues to meet any new expenditures. Um the lack of the fire services agreement significantly contributes to the problem and agreement would go along ways to improve the budget. So those are just three three weaknesses.
Can we go back to the weaknesses, first I could stop before we get to the strengths?
Yeah.
Um one of the things on debt capacity that I just wanna give back, that half a million dollars, I mean, that wasn't shown anywhere in your capital.
No, I, yeah.
And I know we talked about scheduled bid, but.
Yeah, no, the the it was um in the financial overview that we had, there was a slide that um I actually have it loaded just in case that uh you had question. This is the slide that we saw, there was eight approximately unrestricted cash, about eight point two, we had three point nine in revolving, one point seven in impact, two point one in impact sewer. And it was like only a half million in operating.
No, no, I'm not talking about water sewer operating, I'm talking about the half million dollars for CDC.
For CDC, for CDC.
And then I wanna talk about the half million, not the operations and water sewer.
Well, the CDC was shown on that budget slide that I showed you a moment ago.
Show me, yeah.
All right, no problem. Couple things open, here it is. And it's all the way down here at the back and it's discovered at the bottom, showing it as a capital project for CDC. It was this slide.
Yeah, they've got the half million coming in for bonded dozens and the half million going in for the project.
No, no debt service, the debt services would have had to be addressed separately, if it got traction.
All right, so go back to, so so that that half million um would would, that that's bonded debt, right?
Yeah, that would that would reduce the capacity that's uh that's being included here with it with it down into.
Okay, water sewer fund operating balance. Three years in a row, we have reduced rates and now we're getting into a position where we don't have funds to operate. Anybody else see that?
Yeah, I said it was coming.
What's that?
They said it was coming.
What was coming?
This would happen.
Yeah, we talked about it last year. What what did we say last year, we said, loved the idea of being able to reduce people's rates, as long as it doesn't get us into a position where we can't afford any revised service.
Right, and the reason we were reducing it was because we had taken, we had taken a big jump and had done a big increase for the sewer portion.
And what was the fear that we have, you know, we had that, it was.
Because we didn't have the refinancing, but then we got favorable financing and started reducing, but we haven't, we've gone too far now.
And what did we say was the the one thing that we definitely, no matter what, did not want to happen?
Go back to where you have to do rates.
Increase.
Rates, increase your rates.
We get on a roller coaster because we're making political decisions instead of actually planning.
This this it's a dangerous, it's very dangerous, yeah, with the carrots going.
We can't operate on that near parts on that.
Can you weigh in on your thoughts about the reduction in rates and their impact? Am I making a connection that is, are we making a connection that is not there?
On that two percent reduction.
You you and or Tom, Tom? I know you're in a tough position, I know you're both in a tough position, but.
The the outcome is what you see.
Right, there's no alternative.
No reduction.
That makes it really easy.
There's no, there's no alternative explanation.
There's no two percent reduction.
It's because of the reduction that we are in this position.
I agree with the uh small reduction on for the the.
Adjustments for the urban service.
The out of town.
Urban service.
Urban services, yes, thank you, that's because I think that's been too high all along and it's not a fair rate, but the the two percent.
If we were not to do that reduction, would number two still be the number two weakness that we face?
Uh, yeah, the the reduction, when we saw it quantified, wasn't a terribly significant number. It took only only a couple, was it a couple hundred thousand?
Four hundred thousand.
The well, the combined.
But would that get us, would a couple hundred thousand get us this year and next year and that year and so on and so forth, get us to a position where that was not a material weakness?
Well, well, one thing to consider, we in the financial overview discussion, we talked about how that uh you can look at the financial statement and you see return of net income of four million. And that's very misleading to the reader, you have to turn the page and you look at the other page behind it and say, oh, yeah, we, you know, we had, we actually sourced maybe three 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 point nine million, but when we looked at the total use of cash for fourteen, we used three million dollars in cash. So the cash flow statement, when we had to pay our debt and for capital outlet and everything else that we needed for that year. And it doesn't mean it's gonna be that way every year where you have such an extreme difference between you you had that income of four million and you had a use of cash of three, that's just like any business. Um it 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 is, they're different, they're two different amounts. And so your use of cash uh of three million resulted in bringing us down to a level where, you know, the other thing that we did over time is that we we stopped using those impact funds, the capital outlet. If if in that year we had used our impact funds and our revolving funds and we had used three million of those funds that were on hand, we wouldn't have shown a use of three million. So that's one of the reasons why this budget is gonna be uh not likely to use cash like that year because we proposed to use those funds that were set aside for capital uses.
But what are the balances like in this one? I'm sure I have.
Yeah, that's right, that's right here, yeah, it was on that slide that Leah popped up, I'll bring it right back up. Yeah, and I emailed this to everyone, everyone has this. But you can see, those balances fell, and and this is just something that Public Works and 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 the administration and and I looked at. We thought that the minimum for those should be in that neighborhood and and they are just minimums, but you can see that the balances uh still in total would exceed those minimums for having funds on hand to make repairs to the water system or the sewer system. Um the revolving is uh maintenance and the impact is capacity, so it's more important to have one point five million in the uh maintenance area than to have capacity. Because you would expect that the people requiring the capacity to contribute. But that that this would take us after this year to about five point one million in total in that fund, without considering any use of cash in fifteen or sixteen.
Can you go back to that, your to the weaknesses and strengths? I I think that the one thing that this does and and should be for us, these are red flags. These are the red flags that say, if we if we don't pay attention to this, we're gonna end up with that so- a similar situation to the unfunded uh.
OPEC, which is.
OPEC, which is.
Number three.
Which is number three. You know, the, we have to address those. Those those are, right now, they're rabbits, but they're gonna turn into elephants at some point, if we don't do something.
I I wanna fix one and two right now, I feel like we can't. I feel like we can make some decisions to head on the right track on one and two right now. Am I wrong? So I mean, two, it could be the rate, with one, it could be what what that we take on this year.
Yeah, definitely.
Start with a half million dollar one, see if it's in. It's a good start.
Okay, so two percent increase for the, or decrease for the water sewer, what was that?
You said that was not substantial, but how, and and I realize that it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, but what does that hu- couple hundred thousand dollars translate to?
Actually, it's, I guess it's two seventy, so it's closer to closer to three if we ran, run around it, you know, we got two seventy, five hundred, I just came back up there. Plus the hundred and fourteen, that's a total of, you know, three eight and five.
And now, is any of that including the urban service?
That's what this is, the sewer only.
That's the one fourteen.
Okay, well, let's not touch that.
Right.
Or yet, let's if we if we did the two seventy, that would um, can you can you show us what the impact of that would be on the chart that you had up?
Uh which chart was that? I had, I could put it on our adjustments page, all right?
Just wanna see what impact it has on.
What it does to our, our sewer.
Yeah, uh yeah, just give me a second, I'll be back quick. Where we were. You know, you were talking about in here and um actually, number number two's a hi- kind of a history, just a fact in history that we had. Uh just pointing out that we had five hundred thousand dollars in cash as if they last all for operating. That's that's just a, just just a uh a number.
That's compared to the eight point one previous one.
Yeah, the 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 of that eight point one million that you look, you saw in the financial statement, all but five hundred thousand was designated for capital improvements. There it's in, it's all in the revolving and it's all in the impact funds, it's not in the operating fund. They can be transferred if the council chose to 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 transfer. And one of the things I was getting ready to explain was, we went, we 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 may have missed the ball over time, some of the improvements that could have been made from those capital funds were made from operating. We could always go back and do some analysis and see if there's an opportunity to reimburse the operating from those funds if they were already overfilled. But you can see, based on what CIP transfers were taking, we're bringing them to the men, so there is no excess funds in those in those uh capital accounts that.
So what's, so what's the right way to, I mean, all right, so transferring some ca- transferring some funds from water sewer capital to water sewer operating um is fine, but that that's not a permanent, that doesn't change the trajectory?
Yeah, there's the slide, you can see, yeah, the.
Yeah, that this is what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all that means is that we fix what has been done in in the past.
And that's fine.
But in the future, if we take, keep taking reductions, we're, then we're gonna have, we're gonna be at our minimums in our um reserve funds and we will have no choice but to pay for capital improvements out of either debt or operating.
We're at minimums is what we're proposing now, like, right?
Okay, what do you propose?
Well, the first thing I wanted to do is just alert everyone that we that we are at the minimum and so we have to be prudent going forward. We have to be careful. Uh there 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 there's some great things going on and one of the strengths is this weakness. The public, this is a tremendous story, the Public Works has done a fantastic job of identifying the city's needs and we do not have what could be a huge unfunded liability in infrastructure that instead is the opposite, they have been aggressive in finding all of the needs and we have funded them. And and we're using these funds that were set aside for that purpose here right today. That three million dollars is in in instead of going to debt, we're funding it from cash, just like it should work.
Right.
And I think we're gonna be taking a rest now and that we're gonna be able to resupply. We we have an automatic replenishment of those that comes out of the a tier in our water sewer rates where it's just filling it like a, it's like a water barrel, it's just always filling.
Right.
And so we're gonna be able to come back to those capital accounts over time and use it, use it and and use those funds. So it's just that, you know, we've we've we we had some lawsuit proceeds that were set on the balance sheet, we had some capital funds that were set on the balance sheet. It 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 made the the reader of the financial statements think that the water sewer fund was bloated. And I just wanted to bring to your attention, you know, it's 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 it's.
It's heavily slanted, it's not loaded anymore.
Right, just wanna make that clear, all right.
That that is very clear. Uh so right now, we are uh about two point nine million dollars short of where our minimum balances should be.
Just just in the, just in the operating, but in total, we're right up, we're right at the minimum.
Okay.
It's a, it's a gap.
Right, well, okay, all right, so all right, so so two point four is the real issue. Some of that could be rectified through a transfer and others could be rectified through, other could be rectified through a change in rate or a non-change.
Non-change, no, no further change.
So over five years, we get to a point where we get to about a million dollars replenished in operating if we were to allow that two percent or did not authorize that two percent reduction in rate and allow that to replenish.
It it's worthy to note, just as a side note, that the Public Works reports that when we put the new waste treatment plant in the service, that the operating cost will be reevaluated. So already, we're, the engineering study has given us some be- be- some feedback and some operating cost information that's gonna require us to reevaluate what it costs to run the uh plant next year. So next budget cycle, we'll be needing to reevaluate the operating cost of the water sewer.
If you're not gonna, you probably won't have enough data to make it a valid maybe, but it's tight by the time the next session rolls around.
Complete nothing besides.
You mean next session is far as?
Budgets.
Budget, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be tight.
Yeah, because the plant's not gonna be completed.
Well, you're only gonna.
We don't have enough data.
But I think the consultant has already provided operating costs, so I think they already have some feedback on what it's gonna cost.
Oh, okay, well.
Those are projections.
Your medical protectors here, real ones.
That's why they're not bringing it and saying forward, I'm just saying, I'm just, I just wanted to call to your attention, there's gonna be other reasons why to revisit.
Yes, that's a good point.
We're going through a transition at this time.
Now, I have a question and I'm trying to pull from memory right now because we're not talking capital CIP and ER EDU's calculations. We have dropped our EDU charges in recent years because we had fewer capital projects in the plants and that's what drives that number, correct? Um it does, the funding source doesn't have any impact on that, in other words, if it's getting, if it's coming out of here or if it's coming out of operating or if it's coming out of bonded debt, it doesn't matter. The project's cost still goes into that number, right? We're not artificially re- uh reducing our EDU number is what I'm asking, I guess.
I don't know that I can answer that question sufficiently.
You understand my question, though?
You're you're saying is is the reduction accurate?
Yes, yes, is it, is it warranted or or is it, because we funded some of these capital projects from other sources than where they may have, might have come, might have come from, did they not get included in that calculation and we artificially reduce the EDU charge?
It it would be inappropriate for me to sit here and say yes or no because I don't know.
I I'm just throwing out any fact you know the answer.
I'd need to to talk to Mike and Amanda about that, I don't wanna say yes.
I would think it should matter, but I wanna make sure.
I'm sure that was considered when the recommendation was made, so that we wouldn't be setting ourselves up for.
Because that's what replenishes the capital part of that, and if we're not.
Partly, there there's also a tier where over a certain amount of consumption automatically, and then for that, there's some some, I can't even remember the exact number of cents, but I think it may be five cents goes right back into the flows into here. So it's not exclusively.
Right.
Um it's not exclusively funded from impact funds, uh EDU, EDU deeds or impact deeds.
I suspect that's. When you said that they, as the growth picked back up and we started to account for that capacity, that would be self-correcting, that that's when the question came to mind, will it actually be? that's when the question came to mind. Will it actually be?
Well, the, the, that one component happens automatically, 'cause it's, it's, every quarter.
Right.
A certain, but, but, but the other, the other piece of it is, is dependent on, in, on, on expansion, on, on people needing additional.
Water. Right. Right. Because we got the C I P this year, and we adopted it. One of the things that we did by doing that in such a short span, we didn't have that E F, E D U discussion this year. We didn't talk about whether that rate needed to change.
Would we want to?
I, I think.
I, I think we should entertain an increase in E D U rate.
No, 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 I was just saying, it was a discussion we didn't have. Usually, we have it at the same time based on the capital projects, um, so that's why I'm throwing the questions out, that's what I'm saying.
I, I like the, there's an offset there. We, we spend lots, every pan, when we see the weakness. But I think the strengths, I think the strengths are, are equally, should be noted.
Yeah.
Well, and the good news is that it doesn't take much. There, there are actions that we can do and to take, to turn the weaknesses at least into neutrals and maybe into strengths over the long term. But that's, my, the only one I would take, I'd probably take exception with is, I think, your three would be my one. But other than that, I mean, it's a great, it's a great tool.
So, so to address number two, to address number two, can we begin to do that analysis in Public Works of where operating funds were used to pay for capital projects in the past and reimburse the operating funds from the capital fund, you know, to see where, you know, that adjustment would put us?
Were we using those funds to pay for this year, or is there anything to reimburse from?
The, the, the problem why I would recommend, probably, we, we looked at that and thought maybe that was a possibility. If we chose to, to reduce the amount that we appropriated, if, if we're gonna fund three, two point nine million from that, from those funds, that brings us down, you can see, to the, what we consider to be the minimum. So your choice would be not to fund those projects and then transfer and reimburse, or to, uh, the good news is, is that five million still serves, that, that gets reported on the financial statement on one line. So the issuer, are, are, the issues of our debt, uh, externally, all the externals take over, see the five million. You know, that, that's just something internal that we've made multiple cookie jars and saying, this is for infrastructure, this is to operate, so. There's time to rebuild it if you chose to, that's one option.
To, to rebuild it by.
But it's gonna go neg- it's probably already, it could already be negative. I mean, it's, it's, uh, so, so that was, that was back on June thirtieth, fourteen.
One of the ways we could replenish. So there, there's a natural replenishment that we discussed, depending on how we use this, whether or not we increase the rate that we.
Or a natural continued use.
Right, or a natural continued use.
Right.
Um, but one of the ways that we could stabilize that number is by not cutting the, the rate. Is, I'm sorry, what were you gonna say?
No.
Is that what you, is that the?
No, no, it wasn't what I was gonna say. I, I was gonna say that you could also move stuff out.
Move projects out.
But that says, uh, June thirtieth, fourteenth.
That's right.
That's not accurate stuff, is it?
No.
No, he's saying it's worse than that. This is, this.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's, it could, it could go, and that.
What are you saying?
Which way it went. I wouldn't, I don't, I wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know?
No, no.
So the replenishment, the proposal is to reduce the rate by two percent. So my, I guess my curiosity is, in that natural replenishment, you said it's like a nickel of, of each dollar or something like that. So is that, or is it of each, each dollar, so it's five percent goes into that?
I'll, I'll get you the.
I think five percent's the number they, that Public Works provide.
Yeah, I have it, and I don't wanna dig through this folder, but I mean, I think what matters more, probably more than anything is annually, what, what it, what it estimates to be. So I'll get you, I'll get you, uh, the annual amount that gets added to this, automatically.
Well.
How much is flowing in here?
Even with what's flowing in there, automatically, annually, we're still down to our minimums, so I don't think cutting the rate is wise.
I don't either. I think we're in a, in a position where next year, we're having to increase rates. And this is what we said last year.
Sure.
Great, let's cut the rates, as long as you can tell us we don't need, we're not gonna need to increase it in two or three years. And luckily, now we're in a position where we're gonna have to have a conversation about probably increasing rates in a year.
Great for the old guy, terrible for the new guy.
But, and, and it, you know, more importantly, it's, what does it do to you, the, the rate?
And doesn't send a right, it, it doesn't send the right message to the, sure.
Yeah. So can we, um, can we put in our, um, revisit slash adjustments list not having that two percent cut?
Can we look at, can we look at something besides a two percent cut? Can we keep a little scale of what we might be realizing, like, one percent, three quarters, one percent, whatever.
So you can, well, five times a half, you know, so.
We can't afford any more.
It'd be one thirty-five.
Yeah, just hon- honestly, I think, I mean, 'cause we would only get, over five years, we would only get to about a million. Or, you know, maybe recovered from not doing that cut, assuming we don't have a cut next year, or the next year, the next year, the next year. You know, we'd only recover about a million dollars of that. We're already behind two point four, so we're not even getting back to healthy by, you know, in, in operating by, by not giving that reduction.
Not doing the reduction.
I mean, honestly, we're already to the point where an increase in the rate would make sense, and, I mean, that's frustrating.
Well, unless we can realize, unless we can realize reductions in operating costs.
Yes.
So.
Or, and push cap.
And push cap.
And push cap, one hundred percent.
So I think, I don't know, my, to my opinion is that the, the healthiest, most conservative thing to do at this point would be to not.
Uh, do the cut.
Yeah, to not do the increase.
I'd say just put it in as, as a change and not a revisit.
Yeah.
I think if everybody's on the premise, it's just.
Yeah, we okay with that, at this point?
Yes.
And if in the revisit, you know, Tim, if, if you wanna revisit, um, the sum cut, you know, one percent or whatever, we can, I just don't know, I guess that's where we need to go.
Well, I was talking about for negotiation purposes, but when I think about it, you know, the, the person who proposed the cut is sort of a black and white kinda guy, so that's the end of that discussion.
Well, I mean, well, as far as negotiate, I mean, we have this deferred budget, so.
Yeah.
I'd even be willing to, to wait on the urban services part of it. I mean, I think, I think that is certainly warranted. I think that, that.
Oh, yeah.
There's definitely an issue there.
It is.
I mean, there's, there's two things. I mean, I think, one, the mayor's proposal to cut the rate is a great gesture to citizens. It just will probably lead to some bad gestures to citizens in the future.
Short-term, fair, for a long-term, uh, I don't think it's the urban services that have been reduced.
Right. And the urban services, I think, you know, they're, they're sort of a, a moral, you know, or, or a justice thing with, you know, people in the urban services district who are paying a rate that is not reflective of their use of the service. So. I, I think, I, I understand why both are being proposed, but given that one is gonna get us, both contribute to get us in, in further into weeds, um, and further into trouble, um, it makes sense to me to reduce the one.
Or just eliminate, eliminate the two percent.
And then let's go to, can we go to capital projects for a moment?
Could.
What is it, what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What?
Well, he's still at the strengths up there. You're still on the weaknesses, so.
Yeah, I'm still on weaknesses. Debt, debt capacity. What does it do to our debt capacity to take the five hundred out?
The, the, the five hundred's not in that, uh, in that little bit of information.
Why?
Just, it was thrown in at the very end, and I just didn't add it here. It's a fourteen, so it'd be fifteen instead of, it would have been fifteen instead of fourteen, but it, this is the gen- this is all about the general, this debt capacity is all about general fund.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this, it's.
And I'm talking about the five hundred for C D C.
Right.
You're talking about the five hundred for C D C?
Well, if the C D C depends, if it was really what you say it is.
That, that's what a C D C is.
It would be more than a.
Yeah, I mean, so the question then becomes.
Is it?
And typically, it's not.
It's, there's not, I don't have enough information. I don't know what's going on yet, you know.
Nor should I.
Typically, it's not, you know, like, we might have a, a contribution every year like we do at S N H I S or.
Right.
It depends on how, what, how, how it, you know, what it is, whether it belongs. So this is, that's a, that's really an urban redevelopment authority. That's a
Which would be more like an enterprise fund, not a general fund.
All one hundred percent. And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any enterprise.
It wouldn't be in there, that's for sure.
So I think we can go ahead and take that out. Are you okay with that?
Yes, yes, yes.
We're gonna do that. Start there, but we're still in.
Well, we, we've improved it a little. It's not a, it's a yellow flag now, it's a red flag now, too.
Oh, oh, one, two.
Two, yeah, yeah, he's a pub one.
Yeah, two's a yellow flag.
Yeah, we didn't take it off.
One's still a red flag.
One's still red.
Yeah, I mean, the, that last sentence says everything. Ho- however the risk is, pro- projects evolve later with higher priority that cannot get funded in a four-year period. If like twenty twenty-three, you do eliminate the eligibility of foreign funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, this is considering, this is a question for you, Keith. This statement is considering that our debt capacity is actually higher than we pre-.
If it would have been eighty percent, this is only sixty percent. So, that's not really too far out of kilter. You're putting your money to work sooner, 'cause you know you have things that are important. That's all that says.
Yeah.
The only thing is, I, I wanna call your attention, you, you could lose some of that debt capacity if you were gonna adhere to that ten percent, if your, if your budget, your, your debt capacity could go up or down depending on what your budget is.
Okay.
And this year, we brought in that large amount of capital that got added. If you had another year where you didn't have any capital, your debt capacity in that year would actually fall.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's a vol- it has a little volatility to it.
All right.
And then you're, it, it's not an ordinance, so it's just a policy, so you, you have the power to do whatever you choose to do.
Yeah. It's not, I'm not sure what to suggest, how we take red to yellow on number one right now, you know, other than digging into projects. I mean, I feel like that's one of those things that just has to be managed, but.
I'd be happy to.
Yes, I.
No, I just, we have an expert.
Keith, do you have a recommended course of action?
Uh, I think it's just, um, that as we go forward, and we look at what we fund next year, and the year after, and the year after, we're gonna take a careful look to see how condi- are conditions improving, then it would give us the confidence to follow that plan. If conditions deteriorate, then we might have to, uh, back off.
Okay. Thank you. I think I understand, and I, I think there's probably not much action. I would recommend we take, given what we've got this year.
We don't have a lot of capital fund.
It's, no, no, no.
Yeah, I mean, everything that's in there, I think, is important, and either.
This is a great job. This really is.
Yeah.
At some, I mean.
Good, yeah, this is great. O P E.
Yeah, that.
We're, we're, we're gonna revisit, we've agreed to revisit that.
Yeah.
We're gonna begin.
Next week, I'll, I'll try to get some new figures for you.
'Cause we could address that, you know, begin to address that by changing the policy for new hires.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's actions we can take.
Things we can do.
Yeah. That's one of the, you know, good news statements. It's one of the ones you can expect to change.
It'll take, it would take quite, if we cut it completely, it would still take, it would take a long time for it to.
And I'm not suggesting we cut it completely. I'm just saying we modify it so that our, our liability expectancy is less as an on, on an ongoing basis.
And a known quantity.
And a known, and a known quantity, not a variable quantity.
Well.
Let's hear about the strengths. We don't, we don't believe.
Why don't you, why don't you present the strengths? I mean, I've been reading them, I'd say, right there, but why don't you, we give you an opportunity to give us some good news.
And on a good note.
And on a good note. The, uh, of course, you keep hearing it over and over, the, uh, the unassigned fund balance is strong, has a lot to do with uh, the fiscal responsibility that's been taking place, and, uh, so I noted it's important to preserve our financial strength, as it's difficult to replenish these reserves. Uh, the water sewer funding, already jumped ahead and mentioned that, uh, we're awaiting unfunded liabilities, um, because we're funding the water sewer infrastructure that's needed. That's, that's very important, and we were able to put almost three million dollars to work this year in cash, and that's, uh, that's very significant. And that's in addition to last year, we used the, uh, lawsuit proceeds to do the same thing. So Public Works has done a great job in identifying the projects that are gonna take us forward, and, uh, we're, our appetite for, 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 uh, funding projects is gonna decline.
And, and additional kudos to them, you know, they've done that at the same time as, you know, the reorg and the chem- chemical cost cut. They've been reducing the operating expenses and increasing their project.
Funding, getting rid of unfunded liabilities, so it's huge. It's kind of a win-win situation.
Yeah, and we've created new infrastructure along the way.
Throw out one observation, in terms of one and one, uh, the weakness and the strength kind of go hand in hand, and I am concerned that we are funding almost entirely our capital budget out of debt.
Yeah.
And yet, we're saying that our, our strength is that we have unassigned fu- unassigned fund balance, and that is one way that we can address that and using some of that. But then the question is, how much of that can we use before we flip flop?
No, we can't. No, we can't. Here's why. I, I looked at that too. We can't, because we're already, I think, low on where we should be in terms of our reserves, including the unassigned fund.
That's what I thought. There's not a lot of.
So I don't, I don't think we can.
And we cannot afford to take more out of there to fund things that aren't budgeted.
And, and the argument that, that we are receiving, you know, the argument that this makes is that, you know, we've got the people's money and we need to start spending it. But the reality is, we can do that at our own peril. At our own financi- at the peril of our own financial health, and that's, that's, I think, what we gotta be cautious of.
My other very large concern about the budget as a whole, and I will state it now, and then we'll have to talk about it more. We identified a lot of areas, a number of lines where clearly the budget is not, in my mind, is not adequate. The budget amount is not adequate to meet the expense.
But I, I think that that is on the shoulders of the individuals who prepare the budget, and it will.
No, it's not. I'm sorry, I mean, quite well. It's on the, it's on the mayor. It's not what they asked for. It was cut at the mayor's level. So how's that on their shoulder? Uh, I, I mean, help me understand. I'm not trying to argue. I'm trying to ask, I, I, 'cause I don't understand. If you say, this is what I need to operate my department, and then it gets to the gobetine, this is not like in a company where the departments are giving it to the C E O, and the C E O's.
Yeah, it is.
Bargaining with.
No, it's not, that's, that's not accurate.
There, we have this intermediate.
That's not an accurate description at all of our government.
There are, there are, there are.
A mayor is not a gobet.
There are, there are different, there are different strengths of the presentations, and it's up to the department heads to utilize the monies that they've been allotted based on what's available to them.
I don't, I don't, maybe I used.
Because of the one.
I thought I said intermediary, because.
You said gobet.
Intermediary is debt.
Not an intermediary either.
It is, because it, I'm sorry, intermediate, it's intermediate, that's.
It's not our government structure. It's not our government structure.
The fact that the, the departments give their budget, and then there's, uh, someone else that reviews it, can cut it, can change it, can, and then puts things forward to us, and there are other factors in there. There are political factors in there that, that come into play, and then we get it, and that's where my concern is.
So, so clearly, what you're saying is you would like to have a, a government structure where we have a council manager form of government, but we don't have that.
No, what I'd like to have is an honest budget.
Well, I, and I think that, that if we set the expectations properly, and I think it's clear, maybe, maybe it's not, but I think that every department manager that's come here, I've said the same thing to them. Please do not come, is this what you need? Please do not come to me with a budget amendment, and if we stick with that, and we, and we, then they'll fight for what they believe they actually need. But if they think that we are going to do budget amendments every time they exceed their budget, then we are contributing to the issue.
But when they come in here and their budget's been cut, and we ask them, can you operate with them?
Right.
And they say, yes, okay, fine. If they say no, they're gonna get their attitude out when they leave. So what do they do?
Again, again, this is like a request to have a different form of government. I don't understand. I, i- it's fine that, you know, you don't like that we have a council and a, and, and a mayor form of government where there's a balance of power, but it is what it is, and I think it's far better than where there is no balance of power, and there's only one entity that makes the decisions.
I totally disagree. That is not my point at all.
That's.
I think that when it stops, no, I'm not, I, when it stops with us, we have a responsibility to make sure that lines are funded at the level they should be.
Yeah, sure, yeah, we're, yeah, we're doing that.
Right.
I don't think so.
Then propose what changes you want.
You made a statement that it was different in the, in the business world, in the private sector. It's not.
No.
The corporation, the corporation and the. The corporation, the corporation and the board sets what, how much money you're gonna get based on, and then it trickles down. And then you gotta make your budget fit that, if you don't like it.
And and to suggest that a CEO, you know, should not, you know, change what a department had requests for would be a dereliction of duty. Whether, whether or not they think they need that or do need it. I mean, that's, that's the job. That's the job.
I said the expectation when I was in business.
Yeah, that's the chief operating officer's job as well.
You, you don't.
I know what you're saying. I'm not making my point well.
That's the job, in any, whether, whether it's private or public, you know, the structure, we're actually more similar than a council manager form of government. We're more similar to private corporations.
I, I was attempting to liken it to the CEO position strictly, getting the budget from the department heads. And Jack's perspective and looking at this, what he's used to getting from the department heads, uh, or from various departments, or putting the budget together yourself, um, whatever. There is that political component in there. It could be likened to having to answer to your stockholders and sit and put out dividends, but in a nonprofit, you don't have that, that component. So it's, it's a bit different.
But we had, but we had, my CFO would sit next to me and go, you can't afford that. And I'd go, okay, cut it.
How much can I afford?
How much can I afford? You tell me how much I can afford. You have to make it work.
And that's really what.
It's the department head.
That's really what it comes down to. There's only so much money to spend.
There's so much money in the pot. This is what you, what you're getting. Fight for it.
Well, I think, if I understand, what I think you're highlighting, which exists several times in this budget, is reduction, and what, what you don't want to see, if I'm reading this correctly, and I agree, is a reduction at the mayor's office of things that are, that cannot be cut and that we are going to end up having to.
Do budget amendments for.
I don't wanna see that either.
And to go have it.
That's what I see.
I don't wanna see that either. I agree.
And I see, I see money in lines where it's feel-good and it's popular and cuts in areas where, and in the, in those lines, if they came to us with a budget amendment because we wanted the real party, we'd say, no, we're not doing a budget amendment for that. If they come to us with a budget amendment because they need gasoline to get the cars, police cars to call, what are we gonna say? That, those are not the particular lines, but that's my, that's the example. I feel like there are cuts in lines where it's not sufficient and there are lines where it's gonna be very difficult to say, no, we won't do a budget amendment.
Well, well, let's.
And I'll compile the lists.
Yeah, let's, I mean, let's revisit.
Kinda, I didn't get to it last time, which is too tired.
Let's revisit those because, I mean, I don't wanna walk out of here knowing we passed the budget on, with items that we, we absolutely are confident are underfunded.
And I highlighted each one of those as we.
I don't wanna vote for that.
That's why I did the line blank, because that's what I was thinking.
But, but I do think we had the department head for each department here and asked them the, the specific questions. And I don't remember hearing at any point where we didn't make a change. I don't hear remembering, I can't, I cannot do that.
We did for major mine. Should I know if you ever hear that?
I was here.
Carl, sorry, hit it again. I'll just demote it.
I would, yeah.
Still going into.
I, I, I demoted it in my head when you said that.
And then there were, uh, some critical items that were cut as well. Which fits on a critical item list. I don't know what the standard is for developing that list. How critical is critical? I critically want it or I critically can't function without it?
Yeah, like put everything.
It's by definition, it's, 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 it's got some of both, 'cause there's not a, a, a level of critical given to it. It's just anything that you couldn't fit into your budget and hold to the directive that it be level, if it was operating. So you could have some very.
So that's a wish list. That's not a critical item.
Exac- exactly. But there could be some critical things on that, on, on the critical list, but there could be some wish items on that critical list that.
We need two lists, because as I've asked each department about critical items, except for I, I, we got the list from fire. I did not get to ask police about that. Um, but how are we to tell that, you know, a couple of years ago, we didn't fund turnout gear? Or for several years it wasn't funded. All of a sudden, we have to replace everybody's turnout gear because it was deferred for so long and we, I didn't even know there was such a thing, much less that it was so expensive. That's what I'm trying to avoid, getting to those situations where we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, and then it hits us on the head and you have no choice.
Jack, can you answer some?
No, I said not.
I probably said too much, but.
Well, let, but let's compile that list so that we can revisit each item and, you know, discuss again whether or not. I mean, this council, I think, is going to be disinclined to entertain budget amendments for things that were discussed here and come back, so.
Or not, that then are not emergencies.
That are not emergencies.
Because that's what our code says budget amendments are, emergencies that could not be anticipated at budget time.
Right.
Or value weighted.
Right.
Or Disney sex.
So that's.
Value.
Shane, you leave?
Yes, she did. We were supposed to be done.
I didn't say that.
She didn't.
I didn't hear her say it. We need to sign, we need to sign that letter, the hard sell.
Stop back. I think she had to pick somebody else.
All right. Well, with that, we're gonna need to come back to revisit. Um, we covered everything on our to-do list. Uh, we just have to revisit. Um, we've got a little time scheduled tomorrow, if we can do it. Is everyone still able to meet tomorrow?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock? I can even go earlier if others have.
Shut it off. I'll take you all the way back to, to.
I can do.
Wednesday, uh.
Morning.
I'm good. I'm good.
All day.
Uh, except for around ten.
All right, it's gonna be, you're busy in the afternoon?
Four o'clock on the six, there's a four, but, um, dentist appointment is it? I don't know. Yeah, I hope I do. I might be able to reset the.
The desk one?
Yeah. Just pray out, pray, yeah, let me, can I calm soon?
I'm available from eleven thirty.
So two works, two works. I can do two, if you can do two. It's gonna be important that we have you for that conversation.
So starting at two and then.
If that works.
Continue, yeah. I'll wait.
Tom Keith.
I, I can do two.
I mean, if we can even just do a two-hour block, I think we can get to the revisit list.
Yeah. So two to four is gonna be good then.
So that's okay with all of you?
So you're, you're leaving four to six, and it's coming to four.
Yes, we can, oh, yeah, we're shut down.
Okay, so I thought you were.
And we could, and if, if we cover the list, ninety percent to do, that we could revisit first, and then if there's anything left.
Yeah.
They're coming in, yeah, they're gonna, uh, fire departments responded already. They're gonna come in next Thursday. I think it's the date we picked.
Well, y'all have fun to that.
Thank you.
Missed that enjoyable conversation.
Usually that's where we hear about the things that we didn't know that we didn't get in the.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a useful conversation. All right.
I think we requested last year, and I thought we were going to get in this year, but apparently something changed, that we were going to get what was actually requested and then see what ended up. So the things that were removed, we were gonna get this, but.
I just, again, I'm not sure how that would be appropriate. That's not, that is not how.
For me, I'm not talking about adding it back. What I'm, what I'm looking for are those things that need to be on our radar for future. Like the, I guess just, it'd come from those being like police vehicles. Same thing happened with those. And the ambulances, they weren't sure they were gonna start when they really were called and then they had to replace all three at once. You know, that kinda thing. That's what I'm looking at that, that for. What is it that we can't do this year, but we know we're gonna have to do in the future?
And I think that those are the kinds of things, like we were asking questions today about, I asked about the fleet management. I asked about the computer management, the rotation. Those are the questions we should be asking. We're the, we are the board of directors of corporation. That's what we are essentially.
Well, I found that I get more information from the list than, than I get when I get asked questions. So. Just like.
All right, done?